The injustice for all. Please silence all your cell phones or electronic devices. Do you have any additions or relations to the agenda?
Uh, we've got a manager.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Oh, so good. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Any comments? Looks like we have the... What's that?
Scouts.
Scouts, or scouts, sorry? We're just here to go through.
Yep, we're just here to go through.
Working on a badge.
Well done!
Is it a badge in there?
Yeah.
Wow, congratulations. Welcome. Consider the consent agenda. Uh, consider the monthly, previous monthly board meeting, the monthly cash flow including investments, monthly bills paid, monthly bills paid in the activity count, accounts, donations, and a personal summary sheet. Make a motion to accept them.
I'll make that motion.
One second. All, any questions or comments?
There's gonna be some. I'm uploading them right now.
Can we wait on that until you guys get adjusted?
I'd like to glance at them or take out the two.
You can take off. Summary sheets in there.
Yeah, I only uploaded the summary sheet, so I could say I'll make a...
An adjustment?
An adjustment to my motion to approve what we have received.
Correct.
Under the consent.
And then you can look at it in the end.
Yep.
After they've gone to everybody's, you can cancel.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, a bid, amended motion.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna see amended motion, just the ones that were on here.
Oh, I'm with you.
All right, special board reports of causal action. Personnel, we did not meet but are scheduling a meeting in October.
Yes, we could do that afterwards, that'd be great.
Yeah. October will be a great one.
Yeah.
Perfect. Uh, curriculum.
We did not meet, but I do have an update for everybody. Um, this is with the start of the school year, a couple of weeks into it, um, just a reminder, teachers are starting their PLC work, so that work they're looking at data, uh, as they go throughout the year. Elementary is still focused on literacy and, and that around both the letters training and then their implementation of UPLI, uh, foundations. Technology, we are fully equipped and we've handed out all of our Chromebooks. Uh, we have some seniors that take classes at, uh, CLC and so they use their own Chromebooks, but for the most part, we have everything out. Uh, and I just put a reminder, district leadership team, we did not meet. We are setting those goals after we get the patchwork data assessments done. And we are in the midst of that right now. We had a little bit of a rocky start for the first couple of days to get started, but after that, everything is rolling along, uh, actually quite smooth and quite quick. And then, uh, career programming, just a couple of things. I attended the career programming workshop. The regional centers across Minnesota put a workshop together, uh, it was in Mankato. Uh, just a great reminder of career pathways. This one was focused on manufacturing. It was really a great opportunity to get into the manufacturing business, get to the floor, and, um, have some talking points to go talk to employers about how do we get kids in here? How do we give kids the opportunity to see this? A lot of times, especially in manufacturing, the age given is a sticking point in terms of 18. Um, there is, in terms of deed, there is a lot of things that a kid can do at 16. And so really getting that message out that we want kids to have that experience and see if that's something they'd be interested in doing. This one that I went to was called Jones Metal. And they do anywhere from the electrical boxes that you see to other projects that are art projects all across the country. Um, and they have actively looked at how do we recruit kids because they're constantly looking for employees.
And one of the things I talked to Jason about before, and I hope we look each farther, is the, I think it's Little Falls is doing the CDL training.
Yes, and so we're looking at that for this spring.
You walk off the high school with the CDL?
Yes.
Which isn't a small jump then in a bus driver? Since we have bus drivers.
Correct, exactly. We have the youth skills grant with the CNA program currently right now. The CDL and a manufacturing one are in the works right now as we move towards the spring. Uh, and the last one I have on there is just, uh, early childhood. You know, again, we're thinking about E12, all of the programming that we do. They have a fall conference that I'll be attending with them and really looking at what is the, what the resources that we have there, but we've also added in a three's, uh, contained classroom for special education, um, and how is that integrating together with our four-year-olds?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions first?
Brian.
Anything else from the curriculum committee?
No, schedule a meeting.
Policies.
Nope.
Activities.
We did not meet.
Beautiful. Facility.
We did not meet, but I have an update on, uh, the little project of putting drain tiles so we don't have a little water pond anymore. So I don't have to hear from Brian and Sarah anymore about our little water pond.
You only heard it from...
I was wondering where this came from. I was like, what is this? How do we know about this? Okay, I know now.
Yeah, right when you come in, there was a little bit of a dip there in the, in the grass behind the bleachers and it builds up the water. I think what happened was they were dragging the heavy equipment on there all the time, so it just packed the soil and it just didn't drain. So we had the company come out and put in some drain tile and there's a drain there, so, and they reseeded it and...
It does.
Probably should go, so hopefully by next spring, we won't have any reason to put a water pump in there. Miss Nagel.
Thank you, Mr. Wallmer.
We tried a couple of things, but they didn't work.
I was just trying to turn a negative into positive by turning a drainage issue into a water feature.
It's been taken care of, so we should not have any.
Budget?
Budget, we met tonight. Perfect. Um, we have our audit scheduled. We're gonna go over that on October 14th. So you'll hear about that at the next school board meeting in October. Then I'm gonna let Missy present our board book. And we will have need to make a motion about our levy, so.
All right, so before we do the first revision, let's just go over the levy information. So you have that in front of you. Um, so with the latest levy update paperwork that was on Friday, was the latest levy run. So if you can look towards the bottom of your sheet, you're gonna see the percent change from last year. And it's gonna be a 1.45%. Now, I do anticipate that this number is gonna change from 1.45 to 2.25 because if you look at the school age here, the funding for that, that 30,000, hasn't pulled in on the report. So once that pulls in on the report, it's gonna change this number from the 1.45 to the 2.25. So that is what I would recommend that we approve at tonight's meeting. The 2.25% change.
And I would say we probably go ahead and do that motion right now, right? Before you, okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the 2.25% increase on the levy.
Okay, and zero second. Okay. Now, questions, comments, and concerns?
Yeah, what is this 2%? What is it coming from? So...
This is, yeah.
Go ahead.
So these are the levy dollars. So when you get your property tax payment, so some of that is part of this funding that we are receiving.
Okay, so we're increasing, we're voting to increase our levy by 2.25%. Well, technically, has it already been voted for this 1.45?
No.
No. So we're voting to vote to do it for by 2.25?
And, uh, can I make an explanation?
Yeah, I just wanna know why.
No, I didn't, I, because I think every board member has always been confused about this. When we start this in September, we have to take as much as we think we will need and we don't actually finalize it and can throw it down to zero or lower if we so choose in December. But if we go, say, zero now, we can't go up. So if we think we need 2.25 in September, we ask for it then, but we can always lower it when final numbers come in by December, just so you're aware, this isn't a final final. But we can't ask for more if we don't ask for it this time.
Okay, this is what I'm anticipating that we're going to need because of increases.
Last year's was 6.8% increase. So it's quite a bit lower than last year. So it's actually a very good levy report.
Okay, I, yeah, I just wanted to know what it was, where it was coming from.
Some of it's from the state, some of it's from both, and some of it's from local. So if you look at the back on this side of the sheet right here, you see where the Xs are, Bridget? That tells you where it's coming from.
Oh, okay.
If it has an X in front of them, that's money that's coming from, for example, the equity level, that's state. The next one's transition, that's state. Next one's unemployment insurance, that's local.
Okay.
That's the one that the state passed on to us this last year.
Very nice.
In, in unemployment insurance. But that's, we're paying for that now.
Yeah, great.
So, that kind of explains where the money's coming from.
What is tree growth?
Uh, that is when they, I believe, for the our school forests, on whether or not they, um, they harvest it every so many years and hard to get, uh...
Logging.
Logging, and they harvest so much and that's what they average off of the growth per year.
Okay.
And there are two forests.
Okay. Sorry.
Good on levy.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? House is...
All right, so now we'll move to the first budget revision. Pretty short and sweet. I didn't change anything to the community service part, the community ed, or the debt service. So that's why your report is quite short, it's just the gen ed. So on the first page, you'll be able to see the savings to the budget. We were able to adjust our APUs from what we stated we had now that we have kiddos here. We know, we got buds and seeds, we know who's here, who's not. So we were able to adjust our APU from 1412, which is what we had in the original budget, to the 1430. Um, there were some benefit changes, so if you remember back in June, I budget everybody at the highest rate of their health insurance. And then once they come in, and then I adjust that as, as they come in. Revenue adjustments, so we just got a new gen ed revenue sheet that was downloaded from MBE, so that's gonna be more accurate revenue than what I had back in June. And then some cost increases. We have a long-term sub, we have salary and lane changes, so every September 1st, the teachers can then apply for their lane change. And then we had a physical therapy contract change, so that, that was in there. And then we have increased PSE O costs. Now, when you look down to the unassigned, unassigned fund balance, the actual and the projected, those numbers are still the same from the official budget because we don't have our final numbers in from the audit. So once I have those final numbers, those will be updated in the second revision. But you will look at the second line item and that will have your access for what we have for this first revision in our budget. Any questions on that?
So we're 220, explain that number.
Yeah, 220 to the...
Yeah, because we have people maybe watching that can't see that. And we ended last, at the first budget revision, or the first budget, we were 30,000 to the cut. So that's an increase of about, you know, from a 30,000 to 220,000, so.
What, last year ending, I know our fiscal year doesn't quite line up with the school's year, but were we ending, were we ahead of the game last year ending our school year?
We don't know that yet. We, we anticipate we are, that's when the audit will tell us, that we're having next, the next few weeks.
I guess because it's hard to want to increase a levy when you see that we have money sitting here for the taxpayers watching.
You have two things there, Bridget, though. Our policy states 10% fund rebalance.
That's true.
We have to keep a 10% fund balance. And the other thing is you have to keep in mind is that the two biggest things that we have to generate revenue from those levies is the operating, the levy of the, the 724, which is per, per pupil, and the second one is long-term facility maintenance. Those are the two biggest levies that will affect that percentage. We have tons of projects that we know we have to do for the next 10, 12, 15 years. So we're taking money now that we may spend eight years from now when we do roughs, or eight years that we do something else. So it may say an increase now, but remember, some of those dollars, we've already planned to do projects for maintenance years down the road.
Okay.
So you gotta kind of think of it as a long-term, not just increasing this year.
Well, and also, instead of increasing one year at 12%, because this is here we have to do it, 1% is a little better.
Yeah.
It's a little easier.
Zero and then 12.
Yeah, for sure. Or giving back, we did that one year. And I was a hard fighter when it all happened.
It's okay, I just, you know, I'm just being...
Good questions all, so I, you know...
And it's learning curve book.
So the next page is just your, we're going into the graphs of the nitty-gritty. So the next one is on the revenue. The amount in the revenue did change, but the percentages down in the paper, those didn't change enough to change pressure, so that's gonna look very similar to your official budget because it didn't change enough to, to adjust that. So your next two pages, they're both expenditures. So remember, the first one we go over by program code and how it's divvied out that way. And so you've got six, 17.6 million in expenditures by program code, and you can kind of see on the graphs how that is split out between sites and buildings, and pupil support, instructional support, special ed, vocational, the regular teachers, elementary secondary teachers, district support, and administration. And then the second chart is based on the object code that's reported to this thing. So with this one, they take out like staff development and the debt financing. So that's why this one is gonna have a little bit different amount. But essentially, the bulk of it is gonna be the same with your salaries for your people, your benefits. So this salaries and benefits are included in the chart down below. And then you have your purchase services, supplies, capital expenditures, and then other expenses. And that's the meat and potatoes of the first revision.
Anybody have any questions for Missy?
Lots of changes, but it's...
Is this something we need to approve tonight?
Yes.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion?
There's no budget revisions on the...
Yeah, we already did the levy.
We already did the levy.
The levy, it's already been done, there's no... We can't do it tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, you're right, I don't know how that didn't get on there.
Yeah. It's not on our meeting thing either, I guess.
So we can switch add it to October.
October?
Yep.
That'll be soon enough?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't matter what month we do it, it's just...
Well, then, does anybody have just any general questions?
Put it on the agenda for...
Thank you very much. Anything else from budget committee?
Mike, are you, Mr. President, are you gonna talk about adding classes and that kind of stuff, the PSE O thing?
No, not at this time. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna, that's on the agenda for the curriculum committee.
Okay.
And then go from there, yeah.
All right, enrollment update.
Uh, manager and the board, you have your sheet that I put on your desk. Currently, we're at 1324 students.
I didn't get one of them.
You know what, look at that, sorry.
Oh, right there.
Oh, yes, it was after.
So we're at 1324. Um, currently, we ended last year at 1267. That's where you see the adjusted and number there. We do tend to lose kids throughout the year. Uh, typically, as some high school students that may enroll in ALC or charter schools. Uh, last year, we did not, however. We actually stayed really status quo all year, which is very, very rare. But, um, so that's an increase, and then you can see where we're at class size there. I just updated that number with that, so. Kind of gives you an idea where we're at. So that's where we pulled the number to increase the revenue from that $94,000. And we did put all those kids in because we know we lose some kids too down the road usually.
Any questions? This sheet, this sheet says 1,298.
It does, I just wrote that.
You gotta add the early childhood in there, though. Early childhood's not on this sheet. So you gotta add 25 kids for early childhood.
So 13...
1324, I believe, is where we're at right now. This sheet doesn't include early childhood.
Perfect. Any other questions on enrollment?
Early childhood, we get funding for?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Crisis team booklet. I have a good question.
Yeah, manager, I just threw, added this in there, um, just so you guys could see that we do have a crisis booklet that we meet with the admin and some of those members. Uh, we did not change much to this year's, but as you say, you might, you guys might have some questions and things, but, um, these are things that we have in place for crises. So, questions?
I have three questions.
Yep.
One, on page 14, the elementary self-catering doors, it says that if there is a lockdown, uh, they can, whoever is locked down in there can tape the windows. Is there always paper and tape there or...
We have blinds on all of them now.
Oh, so that's, it needs to just be changed in there.
But they do have the little window next to the door.
Yeah.
That they have to have table, paper ready by to cover that up.
So is, that's my question, it's always there?
They have that, yes.
Because otherwise, that's not right.
We have blinds in every exterior window now, we've added those.
Perfect, love it.
And then the ones inside the locker room, inside the hallways, teachers know that they have to paper by to tape up if they have to.
Okay. Next question I had was, was the board notified? That that was not involved at all? Notified any board number?
Probably as soon as I know about something, I will let you guys know.
Okay. I was just, it wasn't in there, so I was just questioning. And then the last question I had was on page 19 for the death notification for teachers to give the classes. Some of the words in there, I don't believe are supposed to be said anymore.
That was my biggest concern too, I think.
For instance, committed suicide.
I can speak to the committed suicide, I would like that changed to die by suicide.
Sorry, but...
Uh, and the second line it says committed suicide. I would like that changed to die by suicide.
Die by suicide?
We don't.
Does, we do not, it's the word committed one that we're talking about, right? And in the, is there anything, so from previous experience of family members who lost a child, anytime, is it verified with the family what the family wants said? Because some families more differently than other families, and I, my family, they more differently and they didn't want it talked about.
Yeah, we, we would cover that with our, with our families.
So you do verify with the...
This is after the fact, it's something that we would say. You're not doing it right immediately, you know?
I just wanna make sure the families are given the authority to say, you can say this, but you can't say that.
Yep.
Those, those remind questions and concerns. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns on, or comments on the crisis? Booklet.
No.
Oh, it's good job.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll update that page there.
I do think that we all should take it with a little grace. Because every emergency is different. As, as the school does, we, we have our children's best interests.
And what we do is... Mine was just clarification on...
We do meet, if something came up, the team would come together and we would talk through all these and, and the situation and how to handle and what to do, and so it was, it's kind of talks. We also have a, a group called Joe Donovan Group that we use for communications. They're, that's what they do, how to communicate, the different things that we can use and, and have them develop some stuff for us that they do free through Mesa. So we use them a lot too as well. That's what we used with the bus accident last year, and they'll write it up for you and they're professionals. They know how to word things and say things, but, yeah.
Perfect. School board recognition month. I really want to thank you all.
Yep, I just wanted to recognize you have a certificate there and some little goodies that we put together for you guys, for all your dedication and for your work, uh, serving for our community and our school. So appreciate all the things you do.
Thank you.
And you all got a new car with new car smell, air freshener. Couldn't buy a car.
I was gonna say that.
But I got you an air freshener.
That's school board delighting to go up a little higher for that, no? Uh, Cass County Children's Initiative Interactive Agreement, which is, in case of the end of the question, something I believe we signed every...
Yeah, you have a, I have that packet included too. And what that is, is the Cass County Children's Initiative, there's all the schools and family centers in the county. We meet together four times a year and throughout the year, our special ed teachers, our social workers and people like that, they'll do what they call time study stamps. And they'll, they, every so often, they have to put in who they're working with, what they're working with, and that money is collected, it's through the federal, it's through the federal government, and we receive revenue from that, uh, from Cass County Children's Initiative. So we get about $30,000 from them. And we participate in other things, that's where a lot of the county is working through us with opioid, uh, some different things. It's just kind of a group of people, all the schools, family center, that work on the benefit of kids. So, and we use the $30,000 to help provide support services for our students.
Can I get a motion to accept that agreement?
I'll make that one.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, did I read it wrong? Because I read it as we pay them five grand.
We pay five grand, we get 35 grand back.
Okay.
So it's $5,000 to belong to the group, we receive a payment back from them for $35,000. So we net 30 grand.
Okay. And then another question. So what does, so it just, we do this because we get revenue? Because don't we offer all these services already within the school?
We've added, that $30,000, we help offset the cost for our elementary social worker.
Okay.
But we use the money to provide support services for students. We use it for the elementary social worker.
Okay.
Which is what that money was supposed, you have to use it for something to benefit kids.
Right, right. I just, I was understanding as, it's, it's another government entity that we're paying into. I didn't understand that we got money back out of it and that we use it to take care of the services that we...
And Missy also, we do receive, uh, we'll receive $13,000. Missy does all the bookkeeping for that group, and she does all, as a... Where am I looking?
Bookkeeping.
Bookkeeping. So she does that, so that she uses some of her time to do that for this. Villager's the whole site, so they pay us $13,000 to help offset some of her time to do that. So we also get the $13,000 from them for that. So.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Sarah, we'd like you to sign that after, because it's supposed to be signed by each other. Okay?
Superintendent's report.
Uh, yeah, I have a few items. Um, November pop press deadline is this week. Uh, hoping to get that mailed out last week in October. So if you have anything that you want to put in there, uh, we do have a few more days left of that. Uh, the elementary art teacher, Samantha Roden, who is new this year, she is using some of her time in her class as some tech side. She is creating an elementary yearbook with the help of Jostens with, uh, some of our classroom kids to do, to design that. That is a supplement that would be, families could purchase for $15. So that's really just geared towards elementary, has more elementary photos, has more things in for elementary. So that's something families could purchase if they want to as well.
Will they still be in the other yearbook?
They're, the, just their, their photo is, you know, the, yeah, we're still doing that. But this one has more of the elementary photos and different things that they would have.
So the elementary kids will still be in the main yearbook?
We did that for you, Miss Nagel. And as soon as you retire, we probably won't.
Always have.
Right, what? You're gonna remove the kids? Not just me.
I'm joking with her.
Oh, geez.
The problem with it is, is, here's the problem with it, Bridget. The yearbook is 60, uh, $60?
58 if you buy it now.
58, so all the elementary kids have in there is just their picture, right? So some families don't buy that because it's $60. So if you have a kindergarten or a first grader, families aren't buying that because it's just their one little picture of their kid. Where now moving forward, they may, I'm not saying we're doing that, but the idea was, for $15, they can keep that all the way through, they can buy a kindergarten, a first grade, a second grade, a third grade, and they have the little supplements for every, and it has more photos of elementary rather than just the picture of them and not have to spend $60.
I'll, I'll be honest, I don't have any problem with the little supplement thing. I'll probably buy that this year also. But the fact that you're still keeping them, and when we are a building of K-12, I don't know why we wouldn't have one.
But a lot of families don't buy that because it's $60.
And I understand that, they don't have to.
So this is something that they can buy as well.
I like the both options. I like the both options.
They'll probably get that. But it'd be cool that the kids get to design that and work on that. Homecoming week is September 30th through October 4th, so watch out for scheduled events for that. One of the goals this year for the admin team is to work on our, to revamp our SAT and MTSS intervention program. That is how kids will tend to qualify for special ed or how we provide interventions for kids. That whole process is kind of, needs to kind of be updated and changed, so that's one of our goals is to develop a committee to do that and kind of look at how teachers use that SAT team to kind of help for them. And Wendy and Ryan and I have been talking about some processes that maybe we can get some, some teachers involved in that to revamp that a little bit. Grandparents' Day is Wednesday, October 16th, from 1:30 to 2:30 for Grins K through 4. So there'll be some inputs coming out to families on that.
That's not a program anymore, right?
No, they just come in and go to the classroom for an hour, yep. NHS Blood Drive is on October 9th from 10:00 to 4:00 in the CTC Center. People can register at redcrossblood.org to come and donate blood. Elementary Student Council is bringing back the Fun Fest for the elementary school. There's booths for the event that people can have. There's input on our Facebook page. And I put, I think, something on your desk there for what that kind of explains what that booth is. And that's just for elementary students. That's a little bit of a change where it's not for everybody, it's just for the elementary kids. The opioid epidemic, there is a panel discussion on Tuesday, October 8th that is freely open to the public. That is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so that'll be in the CTC Center. And then Community Ed and Youth Sports, we have a new Facebook page, it's up for communication, Mr. Smith has created. And lots of great class offerings. He's done a great job trying to add more things there. We have a wood, with sait class. Change for the outcome, that's kind of an, I believe, like, class on opioids and where am I looking for? And you hooked on something.
Addiction.
Addiction, thank you. I couldn't think of the word. Defensive driving for seniors. We've had pickleball classes for beginning pickleball, and we have a female pickleball class that's full. Total body conditioning for the adults, and then we have an art club that meets every Tuesday and Thursday. That, that's really well received as well, so. A lot of great things going on in Community Ed. Hats off to Mr. Smith with all the things he's created there and the communication with the Facebook page and things, so hopefully that's done well.
What's that?
Babysitting class.
Oh, yeah, babysitting class 101, yep.
Awesome.
Yep, that's all I got.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wahlberg? Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I just noticed I have that the cash flow and the most paid are.
Oh, yeah, we got to go to that. Do you have them now?
Yes.
In your books? You want to look through them and make a motion to approve them?
I would make the motion to approve them.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Now I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Sarah, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Guys, hopefully we didn't make this day too long.
I run a very fast.
And me and Brian.
Ryan, you want to shut that off?
Do you need me?
I just had a quick question. So you mentioned the pop press. Is that something we could pay to have an ad in for scouts?
Yes, we can do that, or we do have a community page.